Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Independent. With liberty.
With free.
And justice.
For all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L. 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We now have a proclamation. We have a proclamation recognizing Anthony Putt Putt Patillo.
Hmm.
Okay. So I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Anthony Putt Putt Patillo, a lifelong Asbury Park resident and shining star in our community, was born at 128 Hewitt Avenue on May 29th, 1929. And whereas Putt Putt, as he came to be affectionately known, earned his moniker due to a stuttering problem, proved himself to be a force to be reckoned with by mastering this obstacle by becoming a singer and a master of ceremony. And whereas Anthony's star continued to rise while in high school, as he proved himself to be a triple threat, excelling as a member of the Asbury Park High School's football, basketball, and baseball team, earning letters in each, an all-shore title in football, and a scholarship to Albright College, Pennsylvania. And whereas Mr. Patillo's love for his hometown launched his pursuit of a career in civil service as an officer for the city of Asbury Park Police Department and part of its first motorcycle unit. As city special events director, reviving the now iconic Asbury Park Baby Parade, he also graduated through the ranks of the Boys Club, serving as a youth sports team and board member, and the alumni group founder and president. And whereas his indomitable spirit and passion for life was matched solely by his love for bocce ball, which led to forming a local league and later heading the Asbury Park Putt Putt Patillo Bocce Tournament that was named in his honor after more than three decades of faithful service. Whereas Putt Putts zeal for life, adoration for his wife Nancy, love for his family and community, and I have to throw his children in there as well, having Paula, motivated his use of his talents to touch the lives of many, using his artistry to raise funds for the Boys Club's youth programs, athleticism, and sportsmanship, to spearhead and coach a variety of sports teams. The Gremlins was the first all-shore girls softball team, the Boys Club final, First Flag Football League, and the Shore Bocce Team, establishing Asbury Park as the bocce capital of the state and contributing to rightfully earning the unofficial title Mr. Asbury Park. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Moore and the Asbury Park City Council do hereby pay honor and tribute to the life and legacy of Mr. Asbury Park Anthony Putt Putt Patillo for his outstanding service, relentless faithful devotion to the city and its residents. Be it furthermore resolved that the mayor and council proclaim May 29th to everyone be recognized as Putt Putt Patillo Day in the city of Asbury Park. And I just want to let people know that today I posted some photos of Putt Putt at some of the events that he oversaw on my Facebook page. You know, he was involved in just about everything that happened for so many years, brought tens of thousands of people here to the city. And you know, he worked alongside of his wife and, and his kids came out and dressed as Keystone Cops for the baby parade. So it was truly a family affair. So just wanted to say congratulations to Patillo family.
Eileen, this is John Moore. I thank you very much for reading it. And everybody on the council except Amy because she wasn't there knew Putt Putt very well. And we know his legacy and unfortunately like we found out like this gentleman had never been honored. And unfortunately again, in 1987, in, in, in June, like a week before the 1987 tournament in Convention Hall, he was on city duty at the Asbury Park Press tying up loose ends and everything, and he felt ill and he passed away. And it was a week before the tournament. I was an official, a volunteer, and Putt Putt was one of a kind. Putt Putt was like, I already said, Putt Putt made the handlebar mustache popular before Raleigh Fingers, but I guess Raleigh would argue that with me. And that's all I have to say. If Jesse or Bob wants to say anything because they also knew him, we'll go there. And then we're going to open it up to the family to be able to speak.
This is Kendall. I thought he was one of the leaders of Asbury Park when I was a young guy. And he used to always be on me about succeeding. And that's one of the reasons why when I did come back to Asbury Park, he's one of the guys I can think because he always talk about giving back to me. Always talk about you got to give back to the city. And if you have a chance to come back, come back. So God bless him. And I thought he was a beautiful person.
I just want to thank him for his, I know he's not here, but his family for his contribution and his dedication to our city. And thank you, Putt Putt.
Yeah. Funny.
If you would like, I would. Nancy Patillo? Uh, okay. Nancy Patillo, if you're listening, you might have to press star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, this is Nancy Patillo. I'd like to thank Mayor John and all the Asbury Park City Council for this proclamation honoring my husband. Putt Putt loved Asbury Park. He poured his heart and soul into rejuvenating the city and trying to keep tourism alive during some of Asbury Park's toughest years. He would be so happy to see the Asbury Park of today. Thank you again for honoring him today. It means so much to my family and me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nancy, do your children want to say anything?
Uh, they might. They're listening.
Well, tell them to hit star six and Mike will let them in.
Okay, star six, Paula.
I, I might need a phone number. Sorry.
Or just have them raise their hand.
Yeah, so press star nine if you're one of the Patillo children.
Do I have to undo it, John?
Oh, okay, I got one.
Hi, this is Paula. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Once again, on behalf of our whole family, thank you so much. I'm literally sitting here with tears pouring down my face. John, thank you so much. In all these years, you tried to get something done. And without you, I really don't know if this would have happened. And without this council. So once again, thank you all. God bless you, and we really appreciate it.
Again, thank you, and we thank your family. And the picture of the hat, believe, believe it or not, they get, if anybody, if anybody that knows me knows, John Moore does not throw anything away. That is an original hat from the eighties that was in my closet. And if you guys don't have it, I'd be glad to like give it to you.
Thank you, John. I think I have thirty of them in my garage.
Hello, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes.
Uh, this is Gavin Bella. I want to say thank you very much for honoring my father, and he would be very proud of this moment.
Again, we thank you, thank, thank you and your family and many great days with your dad. Thank you.
We sure did. Just not enough, many, but not enough. Thanks again.
Yep, Nancy, thank you and.
I'm here.
Yep, Putt Putt just passed way too early, but with everything he did for this city in his short lifetime of fifty-eight years is deeply appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a great honor today. It's a great honor.
It's making all of us happy. So again, God bless you, God bless your family, and just everybody stay safe and thank you.
This is, um, this will make our Christmas.
Oh, is that beautiful?
Okay, thank you, Melody. Uh.
We are, uh, there are no special events applications at this time, so we are going to move on to items to be presented. And we have the presentation, I, I believe they want to start with number two. The presentation for Asbury Partners LLC Development Proposal for Block 4001, Lot 2-15, Kingsley Street, Third Avenue, and Fourth Avenue.
That's correct. Thank you. This is Jennifer Smith with Gibbons. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is Jennifer Philip Smith. I am here on behalf of Asbury Partners this evening and also on their to-be-formed affiliate, which will be known as Block 4001 Venture Urban Renewal LLC. We're here to present an application to the city as an entity. And in that capacity, we have already been to the TRC to present this project, and a report has been issued. Primarily this evening, Kenan Hughes, our professional planner, will walk us through the proposed project. But just from a high level, this is a proposal for Block 4001, which is between Third and Fourth Ave, Frontinian Street. And it is for the first substantial new residential rental project within the development area. And you'll see there are two components. There's a multifamily building with two hundred and six units, and then also rental townhomes in the rear of the property, which will allow for a variety of different sized rental units through, within this one project. So with that, I would like to ask Kenan Hughes, walk us through the presentation.
Right, good evening, everyone. So I'd like to start just with this aerial context map here, just to orient everyone to the location of this project within Block 4001. It is located between Third and Fourth Avenues and also bounded by Kingsley Street and the block itself, bounded to the west by Burke Street as well. But Jen provided the overall development program in her, in her introduction. What I would just like to emphasize at the outset is just, first of all, the, the key planning principle of the redevelopment plan for the waterfront is to encourage new residential development, and that would certainly be advanced with this application. And this is really in many ways a milestone project in the build-out of the redevelopment area, as it's the first major rental development project. And a lot of planning went into this application within our team. And this block was identified as an appropriate location of this project, firstly because there is an opportunity here to create a really nice transition from the higher density, high-rise development of Asbury Ocean Club to the east, and then transition building height and density to the west towards Burke Street. And this is a key urban design concept that's advocated in the waterfront redevelopment plan. So this project is going to be wholly consistent with that concept. And then also, as you can see here in this aerial map, we're going to be completing a pretty significant portion of the redevelopment area with the Ocean Club to the east. We have the Asbury, Asbury Lanes located to the north. And then with this proposed residential community, we're really going to complete a substantial portion of the redevelopment area. A couple of other notes, just by way of introduction, the building heights here do conform with the redevelopment plan, especially based on the 2019 amendment. So it's a six-story multifamily building, which you'll see when we get into the architecture. But it also integrates the mid-block view corridor concept. And by that, I mean through the, the middle of the block, there's an east-west corridor at three to four stories, which provides, you know, breezes and some visual transparency from east-west perspective. And that's also something that's required under the redevelopment plan. And then also, this is the first project to utilize the off-site parking provision of the redevelopment plan, which was created in the 2019 amendment. So sixty parking spaces here that will serve this project will actually be located in the existing parking garage located in Asbury Ocean Club. So this is something that's permitted by the redevelopment plan and will be providing documentation to the planning board of the existence of those sixty surplus spaces as part of our submittal for site plan review. Uh, Mike, if you could go to the next slide, please? So here we have just a plan view of the multifamily building, Kingsley Street, to the right-hand side of the page, Fourth Avenue at the top and Third Avenue at the bottom. I'll note, as you look at this perspective, that the entire street sweep of Block 4001 will be constructed in accordance with the infrastructure plan for the waterfront. Next slide, please? And here you have a rendered view of the building at dusk, which is a nice representation of the proposed architecture. The architectural guidelines of the redevelopment plan were closely reviewed as we designed this building. And the redevelopment plan talks about developing new residential buildings that are compatible with and extend Asbury Park's special ocean side character in a contemporary way. And while both the multifamily and the townhome buildings do have a contemporary feel, we did integrate materials and other architectural reference points that you find in the existing built fabric of the waterfront and the city as a whole, including both older and newer structures. Dialistically, this is not an example of Mediterranean revival or arts and crafts or modern styles, but the redevelopment plan makes clear that those styles are not required. The building, having said that, does employ all the key design concepts in the architectural design guidelines. That means emphasizing a base-middle-top format, and that's a concept that's carried throughout all four sides of the building. Likewise, there's vertical articulation provided by creating a series of bays that are differentiated in terms of the cladding material, the colors, the accent lighting, and the variation in the facade. The balconies also here, as you can see in this rendering, add further detail and visual interest to the facades. Also, just as we look at the rendering, I want to just emphasize the importance of enhancing the pedestrian experience. So along Kingsley Street, there will be an active ground floor throughout the base of the building. Even though retail is not required here, the applicant is proposing approximately forty-six hundred square feet of retail. That along with the lobby is going to provide a very active and engaging ground floor along Kingsley Street. And then along Third and Fourth Avenues, the architectural detail and landscaping will create visual interest as well. So there's no areas of blank walls or any portion of the facade that extends more than one hundred feet without a break. Next slide, please? This elevation here, particularly the top elevation, which is Kingsley Street, illustrates the, what I was referring to previously as the mid-block view corridor. So you see that cut through the building, which goes in an east-west direction. All of the windows, the fenestration adhere to the relevant guidelines in the plan, with the minor exception of the window post width and height-to-width ratios for the multifamily building. There was also, and you can see this in the, the lower elevation along Fourth Avenue, there was a lot of effort that went into ensuring that the enclosed parking garage would be properly screened in accordance with the plan. And the redevelopment plan states that the architectural design for the facades of parking structures facing a public street shall incorporate features such as articulated parapet walls, ornamental projections, varied planer widths, et cetera, to add visual interest and improve the overall appearance of the structure as viewed from the street. So the building facade enclosing the parking area here incorporates a light gray plaster facade with architectural grills over the openings that mimic the fenestration pattern of the upper stories. And we had some discussion with the TRC about the design and the screening of the parking garage, and we are exploring ways to enhance the architectural grill work that screens these openings, perhaps even looking at a louver system. So that's something that will be incorporated into our submittal to the planning board. And we also wanted to create some separation between the facade and the pedestrian area here. So there are landscaped sort of buffer strips adjacent to the, the screen on the garage that will incorporate some attractive planning beds along the sidewalk. Just while we're speaking about the garage, we did have some discussion with the TRC about light spillage from the garage, particularly from vehicles. And I want to note that the vehicle vehicular lights will be screened as all of the openings to the garage are located above headlight level. And then more generally with respect to lighting, the building does have some building-mounted accent lighting, but otherwise, it's really just the streetscape lighting surrounding the site. That's going to be part of the overall lighting proposal here. And we will be providing a full lighting plan to the planning board to demonstrate that absolutely no light spillage will be occurring onto other neighboring properties. Next slide, please? So here, as you can see, again, all four sides of the building have the same level of detail and architectural attention. I'll just note while we're looking at the west elevation, which is the top elevation here, the TRC did request an additional rendering of this view of the building, which we are working on and will be providing as part of our application to the planning board. And just while we're on the elevations, just a couple of other comments from the TRC, they did ask the applicant to explore opportunities for some additional color accents, which we will be doing, as well as creating a small return at the roof line to create a shadow line. And that's another thing that we'll be incorporating into our submittal to the planning board, as well as showing the leaders and the downspouts in the facade design. Next slide. So these sections here really just help you understand how the garage is integrated within the building. You also see in the, the top elevation, the right-hand side of that would be the Kingsley frontage, so you see the lobby and what would be the retail space to either side of that, located in front of the, the parking garage, which will be enclosed within the building. Next slide, please? Again, these are sections looking from the east and at the west, which also show the location of the garage vis a vis the residential stories above the garage. And you can see how there will be an enclosed amenity deck located above the garage level, or the garage stories, which will include a pool, some outdoor seating areas, and will be including a, a complete landscape plan for that area in our submittal to the planning board. Next slide, please? So the building will be clad in a mix of brick and plaster. And on the next slide, you can see addition, some semiticus fiber paneling will be provided in various colors. Next slide, please? There you see just some of the, the different semiticus fiber materials that we'll be using in the cladding, various colors. Next slide. As well as metal paneling and grill details, which you see here on slide ten. Just wrapping up on the multifamily building, a couple of other notes from the TRC, they did want us to explore rooftop solar, which the applicant is evaluating. And we'll also be providing to the planning board in testimony all the green design elements, which will be included in the project. We're also looking at ways to add some additional bike racks around the perimeter of the building, as well as bike storage within the building. As I noted, the landscape plans for the amenity areas will be included in our planning board application, and trash pickup will be handled via private hauler. So moving on to the, the townhome portion of the development, and on slide eleven, if you just go back one, you, you can see the orientation here, four buildings, which each include five individual attached townhome units. And then there will be an internal courtyard area for residents, and access to the townhomes are provided via driveways located along Third and Fourth Avenues. Next slide, please? This is a rendered view of the townhomes looking from Third Avenue. Like the multifamily building, you can see how these buildings adhere to the base-middle-top format and also carry this level of detailing and transparency along all four sides of the building. There will be stoops and small landscape areas surrounded by a decorative fence along both Third and Fourth Avenues, which help create a sense of separation and also allow for the elevation of the first story to provide a sense of privacy and separation from the sidewalk level, which is really akin to a typical urban rowhouse or brownstone. And also, per the TRC suggestion, we are exploring whether we can increase the size of the stoops without infringing on the city right-of-way. So that's something we're evaluating and will address when we get to the planning board. And I also want to note that each individual townhome unit does have two parking spaces. And you can see, in addition, the outdoor terrace, which is located on the fourth story. The next three slides, which you can just sort of cycle through here, do show all of the elevations of the townhome buildings. Again, same level of detailing, attention applied. And on slide sixteen, you'll see that the facades are primarily brick and semiticus siding, and all of the building materials here that are proposed comply with the architectural design guidelines in the plan. Next slide, please? Again, just enumerating the materials that we're using, all in compliance with the plan. Next slide. And this provides a zoomed-in view of the overall site design on the next slide. So you can see that internal courtyard, which will be located between the, the townhome buildings number three and number two. There will also be a solid fence provided along the westerly property line. And notably, we'll be locating and screening the utility meters in the area between the multifamily and the townhome buildings to keep them out of, you know, direct visibility from the public right-of-way. So just by way of concluding here, as I noted, we are very careful to adhere to all the architectural design guidelines. And we were asking for just three design waivers from the planning board when we get there. Those are for the material of the door. The doors shall be painted wood or composite wood under the plan. And we have some doors that are aluminum or metal for fire coat, among other reasons. So we will be asking for that design exception. And then we're asking for two related to the windows, one for the width of the post, and then also the height-to-width ratio for the windows of the multifamily building. So with that, that concludes my direct presentation, unless Jen, you have anything further for me? And I know we have our professionals on the line as well, in case you have any technical questions I can't handle.
That's, that's correct. Thank you so much, Mr. Hughes. That is all that I had intended to present tonight to the councilmembers. Certainly, if anyone has any questions for Mr. Hughes or, or our architect or engineer or landscape architect, they're available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions?
I've got nothing.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything, Amy.
I don't have anything.
No, it's part of the TRC, so I'm familiar.
Okay. Again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. So what we are doing now is working with your redevelopment council to finalize a subsequent developer agreement, so that will be available for you in January. Then if you'd like to transition, I can transition to the second project that we're presenting this evening, which is the AP Triangle Public Park. Are you ready for that?
Please.
Perfect. So on the line, we also have Brian Leff, who is our design professional for the public park. But first, a bit of background, this project is a proposed pocket park that is part of, or I guess, to, the townhome project that was recently approved by the council. This park, which is approximately 6,000 square feet, will be improved by the master developer and then dedicated to the city as a public pocket park. And that is a development agreement that has already been signed. So we are here today not so much for approval of the idea of a park, but more for your approval of the actual design of the park. Brian, if you could please raise his hand, so that he can present the details of this proposed park.
I believe Brian's unmuted, yes.
Yes, I think I am.
Excellent. Brian, if you could just tell the council who you are and your credentials and your role in this project.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Leff. I am a licensed landscape architect, professional planner, and currently the president of BML Studio, a graduate from Cook College at Rutgers University with a bachelor of science degree in environmental planning and design, and an option in landscape architecture. And I've been providing testimony in front of boards and councils for several years that sits out all over the state. As far as this project goes, I was involved with the townhouse approval for the project next door, and I was the designer for this park as part of this presentation.
Excellent. If you could advance the slide, please. Mr. Leff, if you could just go over the general location of the project, turn on the map, and then tell us a little bit about what you propose.
Sure. On this first slide, what we're showing, the tract that we're talking about is located at the intersection of Hex Street and Cookman Avenue. It's one of the city's prominent five-point intersections. There's a slight bend in Cookman Avenue at this intersection, which gives visitors prime view of the corner as they enter the waterfront redevelopment area. The Tech Street continues to the south, lined with the pedestrian bridge that crosses over Wesley Lake. These factors combined to make this a prime location for public space which welcomes visitors to Asbury Park. As decided to date residential communities, such as the Monroe, South Grand, the recently approved AP Triangle townhomes, the design of the public space suggests more of a passive use. By keeping the design simple, the development of the park will result in relatively little new impervious surface. Now, if we can go to the next slide. The tract is currently cleared of all improvements, and the recently approved townhouse development is scheduled to start construction sometime in 2021. Because of its prominent view, as visitors enter the city along Cookman Avenue, some temporary ornamental plantings were previously installed to enhance the experience of Asbury Park visitors. These include some ornamental grasses, some pear and London plane trees. If we can go to the next slide. What we're proposing is a passive park design that includes a twelve-foot wide walkway that connects the sidewalks of Cookman Avenue and Hex Street. Three benches facing the intersection of the park are proposed along this walkway. Each bench is set to be a minimum of distance apart. The park design also includes a single bench, bicycle rack, and receptacles for trash and recyclables adjacent to the Cookman Avenue sidewalk. The key feature would be an Asbury Park identification sign, proposed to be installed on top of a low wall behind a grass panel. Jetty Stone will be installed in front of the sign base to hide the base itself and to recognize Asbury Park's long history as a unique destination along the Jersey Shore. Park will be attractively landscaped with salt-tolerant plants, which are known to survive the harsh Jersey Shore environment, and recommended for planting at the Jersey Shore by the NJDOT. So the anticipated plants, which are native to the shore that are likely to be on this site, include service berry, summer sweet, bayberry, and little blue stems. If we can go to the last slide, please. Now, this slide shows how the proposed park will look in the context of the recently approved townhouse construction. The plan shows the townhouses in the background, and the future of the different improvement of the area to have. We believe this park will provide an attractive passive space, which the city will be proudly include in their open space network. And that's it for the direct testimony, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Leff. Mayor, council, do you have questions for Mr. Leff about the design of this park that will be eventually dedicated to the public adaptive construction?
Again, thank you for the presentation. Any questions from council?
I've got nothing.
Hearing no questions, again, we thank you, and we'll move on to the next slide, Alde.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the citywide branding.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Mike Manzella, the deputy director, deputy city manager, and director of transportation here in the city. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be presenting tonight the latest status of our citywide branding and wayfinding effort. This is a project that started about a year ago in earnest. We were awarded a grant from the NJDOT in relationship to our status as a New Jersey Transit Village. We, the city was designated, applied and was designated as a New Jersey Transit Village in 2017. And then in 2018, we were awarded this grant to do a citywide way branding and wayfinding project. The grant total amount was $325,000, of which $288,000 was set aside to actually install new signage around the city. And the question might first come up as to what is wayfinding? Well, wayfinding is using the art, or the art of using landmark signage pathways and environmental cues to help first-time visitors navigate and experience a city without confusion. There are some examples shown there of what some wayfinding signage looks like in cities around the country. And why are we doing wayfinding? Well, wayfinding gives us an opportunity to coordinate a system of sign elements to direct visitors and residents alike to different destinations within the city. It also will help to direct and identify parking facilities within the city and promote walking, bicycling, and mass transit as options, as alternatives to driving, as well as incorporate some of the historic sites and institutions which Asbury Park is famous for. So the goal of this project is to improve the visibility and accessibility of all of Asbury Park's commercial and transportation districts for residents and visitors alike by creating a consistent and enduring brand and the associated wayfinding signage that goes along with it. The transportation part is, is key because this was funded by NJDOT and its Transit Village program, so all of the signage that we develop has to have some element of, you know, basically helping to direct folks to our transportation center and other transportation amenities as a key part of this project. The team that was selected to help lead this effort was a city subcommittee consisting of two council members, myself, the city manager, our director of communications, Sonia Spenia, and the director of planning redevelopment, Michelle Alonso, as well as a consultant design team, which is led by Ingenuity Infrastructure, Jaclyn Flohr and Mike McFarlane, as well as M Studio, a graphic design firm led by Jenna Zillenkar and Josh Kibnik. And we'll be hearing from our design team in just a few seconds. So the process for this wayfinding and branding exercise was we had a project subcommittee kickoff with the members that we talked about just in the previous slide. The subcommittee then identified stakeholders who would be interviewed as part of this project to help develop what the brand story is for the city and how it would apply to the wayfinding signage. So at this point in the process, we are just, just about through with step four, in that we have at least preliminary concepts for all of the wayfinding signage. And I'll talk about next steps in a bit, but the only thing left to do is to kind of finalize that signage and then install it. So at this point, what I will do is pass it over to Jackie Flohr from Ingenuity Infrastructure, and Jackie's gonna talk about kind of the stakeholder process and what we learned from that process. So Jackie.
Can you hear me?
Yes. There's a little bit of feedback, but yes. Oh, I didn't, hold on. Sorry, technical difficulty.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Jackie, you may want to turn speakers off if you've got them on.
And maybe headphones might help, Mike.
Jackie, let's, let's try again, Jackie. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's better.
All right, perfect. And I apologize for the technical difficulties. So basically, I'm Jaclyn Flohr, I'm the president and CEO of Ingenuity Infrastructure. Tonight with me is Mike McFarlane, he was our project manager for this project. We are a planning, engineering, and surveying firm located in Red Bank. We're excited to be working with M Studio that you're here from in a few moments, their graphic design firm here in Asbury Park. So I know Mike already walked us through the process, and so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the stakeholder interviews. In all of our projects, we incorporate a listening thing, which is very important. We want to hear from the entire community, and for this project, that, those stakeholder interviews included council members, businesses, chamber of commerce, business committee, local business owners, as well as representatives for public art and history, so the Public Art Commission, Historic Society, and residents, community organizations, plus also local developers. Through that process, we asked a series of questions. We asked the same questions to every group of stakeholders. The first question was, you know, it was many questions, but they boiled down to adjectives that associated with this, with Asbury Park. As you can see here, we got some great answers, the diversity, welcoming, definitely music and art and architecture, that it's a fun city, walkable, the culture, the history, it's cool-connected, the grittiness, and it's charming and eclectic and authentic. We talked about the unique features to Asbury Park, and the feedback we got, we heard a lot about the juxtaposition of the city and how it's a city on the ocean, and that really cherishes the mix of old and new and the music history and the art and diversity, and it's really a unique city unlike anywhere else. And then, if you go to the next slide, the highlights of Asbury Park, you know, it was highlighted that it's family-friendly, that everybody really cares and knows each other, and it's United City. Talked a lot about the parks and lakes and everything that the city has to offer for small independent businesses, as well as visitors. And then the future of Asbury Park, to support independent businesses, to be mindful of development and growth, and to preserve its workiness and maintain its pride and unity. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to M Studio, I believe Josh is gonna talk a little bit about the brand story.
Thanks, Jackie. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. Cool. Yeah, as Jackie and Mike mentioned, that foundational kind of discovery work with all the stakeholders, members of the community, you know, it's very invaluable. And that took us into kind of the first phase of developing, you know, what we call this branded system, this branded wayfinding system, that was to create a narrative, or what we refer to as a brand story, that could build a foundation for this visual identity to live on, right? So here's kind of a glimpse of our narrative. Asbury Park is a city of many, a city of diversity, a city of opportunity, it's a welcoming, thriving community, it's the pulse of progress living within deep-rooted history. Asbury Park is a unified force of creative energy, commerce, and culture coexisting hand in hand with traits unlike any other Jersey Shore town. That story then kind of led us into looking at and examining all those core attributes, right, both physical and otherwise. So the next few slides, Mike can kind of click through, start to develop an icon system for these core kind of physical attributes of the city, as well as introduce the color palette, the ocean, beach and boardwalk, historic attributes, business districts, Cookman Ave., et cetera, transportation, green spaces, all of the parks, lakes, arts and culture, And the heart of this city, we realized, besides for all of its physical attributes, will always be people. And that heart was, we thought, a great jumping-off point for developing an icon or a visual identity system or logo. And we all kind of, after doing a lot of research, wanted to develop some type of new form of an AP kind of icon, and that's what this is here. It's a symbol that we call, that we're calling to, you know, refer to as a unified Asbury Park. And go to the next slide. You can start to see it evolve here, the mark itself, here just shown in black and white, but you can see it, how it can work and live with type treatments, various type treatments. We need this to be a flexible system that can live on many different kind of platforms and substrates at different scales and sizes, right? We're always thinking about signage as the main end goal. The color palette that's used, again, that kind of represents those core attributes throughout the city. Use of kind of merging gradients within the mark. Again, and these are just kind of some fun, kind of, we always like to look to the future, you know, even though the end goal here is a wayfinding signage program, we want to think about the mark, you know, as it represents the city and how it can be applied later on in marketing materials. And go to the next slide. How it can live with imagery, how it can start to create patterns. And that should be the initial kind of intro to what we're calling the brand system. The next two slides, we're gonna start to get into the actual application for the wayfinding signage program.
Thank you.
So, oh, you can take it over, Jen.
By all means, Josh, go for it, you're crushing it. Thank you, Josh, that was great. So based on the brand system that Josh just reviewed, we wanted to kind of integrate that into the signage and the wayfinding system that we needed to develop in order to create this signage system. So what we first went out to accomplish is the directional signage. So these would be blades, if you will, that would be positioned on posts throughout the city, so kind of developing a color system that collates with different points of interest within the city. So Springwood Park would coincide with the green color that was developed within the identity and so on and so forth. We also extracted the AP icon and developed it into an arrow for directional purposes, so even kind of stretching that brand system even further and incorporating the font family and type treatment into these signs. So these are two examples of directional blades. On the left would be the, the minimal amount of directional blades per sign, and on the right would be the, the most amount of directional blades per sign, and then including logos such as the Parkway. And then including logos such as the Parkway and Route 18. Here is to scale, you know, what we're seeing these signs to be, as well as the proposed locations that were defined by the team here. And I don't know if, Mike, you have anything to add in regards to the locations?
No, for these directional, only that, there is quite a number of locations all over the city as to directing people to various destinations within the city. So I think you can see that clearly from the list.
Yes. And then, then with that being said, we also wanted to explore opportunities for gateway signage, the signage that is welcoming people to the city. But we also made, wanted to make sure that we created something that was just as unique and eccentric as the city itself. So we've developed actually two solutions for the gateway signage. This first one being kind of like a totem, if you will, signage opportunity that can include directional blades or can live by itself. We also thought that the AP icon on the top right hand corner could be, the color could be changed based on the location that it resides. So we can have more flexibility and play and freedom with the color treatments. We're seeing the structure be, at this moment, we're looking into wood, wood materials or substrates that represent wood, as well as metal and vinyl application. So this would have dimension to it, these are all just like initial drawings, but we were working with the engineers to develop renderings that would be more dimensional. And then here's an example to scale of what that would look like, as well as the proposed locations where these signs would live. And then that takes us to the next slide, where we wanted to develop something, a monumental gateway sign that could be an opportunity for pedestrians and visitors or residents of the community to engage with, a potential like opportunity for social media imagery and sharing, or just this photographs in general. We were inspired by the love sign that you can see, as well as other signage that we discovered in LA, where, you know, taking this icon that's so unique, city of Asbury Park, and then developing it like a dimensional structure that can be placed within certain areas of the city. So kind of really driving home that brand identity, but also in a fun and unique way where people can, you know, engage, again, similar to the gateway signage. Prior to this slide, you know, the color of this icon can change based on the location it is, it's located. We're seeing it to be metal substrate with a wood foundation. And then, you know, as you can see, it's, you know, smaller in scale so that it has that opportunity for people to be photographed with or photograph, et cetera. So these are some of the proposed locations for this sign. And then that takes us to the final element of the wayfinding signage package is the pedestrian kiosk. So these would be the proposed locations on the left. So this kiosk then kind of illustrates to the pedestrian who engages with the signage that, you know, their current location, as well as key points of interest throughout the city that coincide with a color palette that was developed and then denoted by the location. So for instance, this would be Press Plaza. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see a detailed version of the map that was developed. We were gifted the initial map design from the chamber, where we then went in and altered and made updates and modifications based on what the city was looking for. So you can see it's color coded based on certain, you know, business districts, parks, beach and the boardwalk, et cetera. And then specific points of interest were included, as well as like car charging stations, et cetera. So we wanted to expand the map to the full scope of the city, not just focusing on the beachfront or the downtown, because we felt in regards to this whole brand system, that the whole city of Asbury Park is important and should be denoted as such. So here is, here is a detail of that map. And then finally, which I was incorrect, there is a parking directional. So these would be positioned throughout the city as well to help drivers identify locations for parking opportunities when visiting the city. And just kind of integrating the font family and the arrow system color palette.
Thanks Jenna, so this is Mike again, I will take us home here. Just wanted to outline what the next steps are for this project. We do have a grant deadline, so we, the timeline is tight, but we're going to try and incorporate as much feedback as possible. The plan is to finalize the plans for bid later this month. We do need to send them to NJDOT as they are the grantee, and they need to review the project. We're hoping to send them out to bid in January and award, you know, obviously collect bids and then award a contract by the council in February to actually install the signage. We anticipate that the installation process will take at least three or four months. So we're hoping to have everything in place this summer. And with that, I guess we can take questions for the entire team. Oh, I do want to say one more thing, for anyone listening, any member of the public, any organization that would like to give feedback to this project, please just email communications@cityofasburypark.com and we will collect that feedback and bring it to the subcommittee for consideration.
Okay, so you're ready?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, it's more. Briefly explain to me, what's the difference between a gateway sign and a monumental gateway?
Good question. So we developed two different signage gateway. So let me just explain first what a gateway is. Basically, that's a point at which someone comes into the city, so mostly at the border to the city. And if you'll think about the various entrances to the city, there are different space limitations in each of those places. So we would like to, you know, put a significant, a significant gateway in size as we can, but we recognize that there are definitely limitations to space. So this gateway sign I'm showing on the screen here will be kind of the more predominant, which will be located in most of the gateways. But in some areas, we do have a little more space where we could put something with a larger base, such as this monumental gateway. And there are also opportunities to put this monumental gateway at other places in the city where there's high pedestrian activity for people to interact with it. So I think, I hope that answers your question.
Okay, and that's what I thought. So I get the gateway signs are on all entrances to the city, but the monumental gateways are all on the east side in the beachfront. Why can't we put some of those on the west side?
Uh, we absolutely can. I think that was something, some of the feedback in the subcommittee was, we can look at various locations all over the city where there's space.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
I have other questions, but I'm going to put them in an email and I'll, I'm happy to send it to the committee. I started at this, I will put some questions into an email, thanks.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Hearing none, what I have to say is like, thank you all for doing such a fantastic job and look forward to moving forward with maybe a couple of slight corrections, we'll see what Amy has to say, whatever. And again, a great job by the committee, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now on to matters from city council. We will start with council member Chapman.
Hi, so I just wanted to remind people that we have COVID testing at our transportation center. You don't have to have symptoms, you just show up. Our next, our next COVID testing is on December 10th from 4:00 to 7:00. And then we have testing also available on December 21st from 9:00 to 2:00. And I also wanted to remind residents that due to a grant from New Jersey Health Initiatives, we have free transportation for residents to medical appointments and grocery shopping. And in order to make an appointment for a ride, you call area code 201, 939-4242. That's all I've got.
Council member Clayton?
Yeah, hi. This year, because of COVID, we've had to cancel so many of our activities, including Kwanzaa. So what we are going to do this year instead is we're going to have a socially safe Kwanzaa. It's, the city is allowed you to join us remotely on December 20th at 6 o'clock PM, and it's going to be held on YouTube. So there will be a link that's going to be available December 17th. And we're asking the community to come together, and we're going to celebrate family, community, and culture on December, on December 17th, I'm sorry, December 20th. Thank you, that's all I have.
Council member Kendall?
Yes, we're coming to the end where the leaf blowers, the DBW is picking up the leaves around, and I have talked to numerous of them, and they're telling me that a lot of people are putting tree limbs inside, inside, and it's tearing up the trucks along with the leaves, they're piled them on top, and a lot of people complaining about the trucks are not coming by, but hey, you got to do your part. So I was thinking, I'm going to talk to the city manager about sending another letter to the residents of Asbury and telling them, hey, you cannot put tree limbs or tree sticks inside your leaves because it's hurting and it's delaying the pickup. That's it.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I don't have anything, thanks Melody.
Mayor Moore?
Uh, yes, I have one thing to start with, and I'd like to thank Diana Harris from Neptune, who's president of M U R C. She shared with me this morning that the Ocean Health Initiative Incorporated is doing free COVID-19 tests and free adult flu shots Friday, December 11th from 10:00 to 3:00 at Liberty Fire Company Number One, 1518 Monroe Avenue, Neptune. And so when she shared this with me, I said, is this just good for Neptune, is this good for everybody? She said, everybody in Monmouth County. So again, I appreciate Neptune working together with us as much as we work together with everybody else. So again, we'll get that up if we can tomorrow. I didn't share, I got it late, so I apologize, I didn't get it to Sony to share. And then the only other thing I have is like, yes, our numbers of COVID are going up every day, and it's, we're not unique. I see other towns with less population than ours where the numbers are like 200 more. I'm not happy with the numbers. I just keep on asking everybody, the only thing that seems to be working is wearing the mask. So please, 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 wear the mask, and it's probably going to get worse before it gets better, but at least we see the light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccines starting to be given in Europe and very soon in the states. And just until then, please, everybody just listen and do the right thing, and please wear your mask at all times, thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
I have nothing, Melody.
Matters from the city attorney?
And I have nothing at this time, Melody, either.
Okay. We will now move on to the city clerk statement. On November 13th, 2020, an initiative petition and proposed ordinance establishing a rent leveling and stabilization board, as well as rules that regulate the price of rent and the rate of rent increase for certain rental housings within the city of Asbury Park, was received by my office pursuant to the initiative and referendum provisions of the Faulkner Act NJSA 40:69A-184. By law, within 20 days of submission of an initiative petition, the municipal clerk shall determine whether the petition has been signed by the required number of qualified voters and is otherwise sufficient pursuant to all relevant statutory requirements. Following the review performed by my office, we have determined that the initiative petition submitted satisfies the requirements set forth by law. Therefore, the petition and the proposed ordinance are herewith being forwarded to the municipal council for their consideration. By law, the ordinance so submitted shall be deemed to have had a first reading and a provision shall be made for a public hearing. By letter which was mailed and made available on December 3rd, 2020, we have provided notice to the committee of petitioners that the petition has been approved and that a public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance has been scheduled for December 22nd, 2020 during the regular public portion of the virtual council meeting of that date, which commences at 6:00 PM. If within 20 days from the date of my office certification of approval, which period shall be deemed to have commenced as of December 3rd, 2020, the governing body should fail to pass the ordinance proposed by the petition in substantially the form requested, then said ordinance shall be submitted to the voters at a special election to be held in accordance with NJSA 40:69A-192. This statement is intended to represent the municipal clerk's certification of the result of our examination of the initiative petition pursuant to NJSA 40:69A-187.
Mayor, this is Fred Raffetto, city attorney, can I provide a brief follow-up to Melody's statement?
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, so apparently there seems to be some confusion among members of the public as to why the ordinance that was submitted by petition regarding rent control is not formally listed on the agenda for first reading this evening. That is not necessary pursuant to the relevant statute governing the initiative and referendum process under the Faulkner Act. The relevant statute is NJSA 40:69 capital A dash 190, and it reads, upon a finding by the municipal clerk, that any petition or amended petition filed with him in accordance with this act is sufficient, the clerk shall submit the same to the municipal council without delay, an initiative ordinance so submitted shall be deemed to have had first reading, and provision shall be made for a public hearing. So essentially, the way the language of the statute is written, the ordinance has already been deemed by operation of law to have had a first reading by virtue of the fact that the clerk has certified the petition and passed it on to the council. All that is required at this time is that the public hearing and potential adoption of the ordinance be scheduled, and that has been done. The public hearing and potential adoption date has been scheduled for December 22nd. The matter will be reviewed in detail and considered by the council on that evening. Of course, that doesn't prevent members of the public from speaking about the proposed ordinance during the open public comment period this evening, but no formal agenda item is necessary on this evening's agenda. And I will say that this is the same exact procedure that was followed in 2017 with the initiative petition that was filed at that time proposing a short-term rental ordinance that was initiated by members of the public. There was no formal introduction that was held by the council. The mere fact that the clerk certified the petition and passed it on to the council represented that the ordinance had a first hearing, first reading, and it was scheduled for a public hearing thereafter. And that is the same process that we're following in accordance with the relevant statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank, yep, thank you for the clarification, in case anybody wasn't sure. Thank you, Melody, next.
We will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? Move to open?
Secretary Kendall?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining, and star six to unmute yourself. I am calling upon 3350, 3350, star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, Ernest McNauley, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, Sand Tander Building. I'd like to start out by saying the Sand Tander Building, of which I'm an owner, is continuing to pollute the whole city, Deal Lake, Sunset Lake, Deal Lake Drive, surrounding buildings, people, grounds. Deal Lake, Sunset Lake, Deal Lake Drive, surrounding buildings, people, grounds, sewers, et cetera. Every time I bring it up, I get blocked from the commissions, the lake commissions. Mister, I don't know his name, the head of the Deal Lake Commission, uh, Brockner, Brockner, whatever, decided to block me because I asked, where are the water samples? Huh? I want to know. And why he's not doing anything to call E P A or D E P to get some violations on the Sandtender contractors doing this non-E P A, non-OSHA work and blowing toxins all over the city. And the city, uh, construction department won't help? The, the, the new head of code enforcement, Tamika Smith, won't talk to anybody. Huh? Michelle and the new uh Siegel are lost somewhere. You can never reach them. They're still running an answering service that said Miss Gasparian. Yeah, why don't you update that, Mr. Alonso? And the police won't do anything when they're supposed to. When there's pollution of public lakes and property, police is supposed to show up, alert. Monmouth County Health Department has that. They're supposed to come out. And if there is pollution going on, huh, they're supposed to get code enforcement twenty four seven. Come out and write violations and the health department. Right? That's not happening. It's all being blocked. And the mayor knows about it, council knows about it, and I've been talking about it for years. And so many people are being sickened now and no, this city manager is lost in a Twilight Zone.
One minute remaining.
Excuse me?
One minute remaining, fifty six seconds.
This, this Donna Viero is a cover up artist like Michael Capabianco, only better. She's smarter than him, but a cover up artist. Uh, Kendall, going around telling people I'm telling lies? Listen, uh, Kendall, councilman, you lost your P E license in schools for beating children, running fighting games, and you appealed it to Trenton and the court order said you should never be allowed near children again. Now I have the whole court document. You want to tell the public I'm lying again? Mister coughing Kendall over there? Stop coughing during the meetings. The Equity Committee, you got to check out these people on this thing. Really, their backgrounds. I hear that you put the worst police on there, the worst council members, Amy Quinn.
Time's up.
Thank you, next.
Now moving on to five four, uh, um, uh, five four zero two six. Four zero two six, please star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, how are you? Um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sylvie Stinkier. I'm calling in reference to pretty much show you guys how the fact that I'm in favor of the proposal for the rent control that, that's just um the vision that's, that's going on. Um, and the reason being is that um I myself and my family and I've had many neighbors who actually, um, even in the midst of the pandemics, um renters have increased their rent and they have not figured out why. So it seems as if they're losing money everywhere else and it feels that it's who are already struggling to make ends meet are the ones that's um paying the consequences. So I think in passing this um ordinance or this proposal or this petition, however you want to call it, um, I think it would give the people of Asbury a chance to actually stay in those apartments. Some people have been living there for more than twenty, thirty years and I don't think it's fair that, you know, um, other people comes and just um and just push them out by increasing their rent whenever they feel like it. Um, I had the opportunity to actually read over the, the, the proposal itself and I, I really do realize that there are a lot of good, um, there, there, everything about it is really just not just in favor of just the renters as, but it's also good for the um, the landlords as well. So it's not just the renters focused, but it's also very balanced. So I would love for you guys to be considerate of this proposal in passing it because if, you know, I believe that the people put you guys in power to look out for them. So I really hope that you guys are not worrying about, um, you know, any people that's calling you to let you know that, you know, that why you should not pass it or why, um, or um, I don't, I don't know how people are bribing you, whatever the case may be. But the truth of the matter is, we, the people, are the ones that put you in power. So you're supposed to be looking out for us. Now, greatly appreciated if you look out for the little people. And I can't generalize and say that, you know, all of you guys have known what, what it's like.
One minute remaining.
And say that I've worked, I've worked with people who are, who have less indeed. And they've worked hours upon hours to actually barely make ends meet and to have their rent increased, whatever landlords feel like it, it's just unfair. If they do have reasons as to why they, they want to increase the rent, that's perfectly fine. However, I think the committee that, you know, that put this in place, they've worked really hard on the proposal and everything that they put on there is very reasonable for both parties. And I would really be glad to see you actually do something within the city to help the people in the city, the people that actually do put you in power. I think you offer all your services in the midst of it, in the midst of the pandemic, but I would really love to see a little bit more towards the people being done. Because I'm seeing and hearing and literally watching too many people in Asbury Park suffer while other people from the outside come in and take over and just, you know, not really have anything done that's supposed to be done. Thank you.
Time's up.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to nine seven zero zero. Please state your name and address for the record. Nine seven zero zero, star six to unmute yourself and your name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello. Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Siegel. I live at uh six oh nine Seventh Avenue. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak uh tonight. And uh I am uh two um commenting this evening on the proposed rent control ordinance. And uh I for one am very happy to see the, this proposal come forward. Uh, I've read it also. I, I feel that there is uh uh several things in it that uh I think people in the city uh would, would like to discuss. And so uh because of that, I'd like to invite and welcome the opportunity to uh have a dialogue with the petitioners of this ordinance. Um, uh, and uh hopefully there's a, an opportunity and a chance for us to sit down and discuss it. Uh, the organization that I, I am with is called the City of Asbury Park Property Owners Association. And uh as property owners in Asbury Park, of course, this is very important and very impactful. And we want to have the opportunity to uh sit down and discuss all of the issues. It's too important an issue uh to rush through very quickly in the manner in which it seems sort of by the way the statute works. It, it happens very, very quickly and it would do a, a, a disservice to the constituents of this ordinance uh and this petition to, to rush it through and only to lose at the ballot um if the council doesn't adopt it on the twenty second. So uh I'm, I'm hoping that uh there is a willingness uh on the part of the petitioners to uh to reach out and sit down and uh and discuss some of the things which we think we can actually improve on and uh over the way it's currently written. And uh, and I thank you very much. And for those of you that know me or you can reach out to council and find out how to get in touch with me. But I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that opportunity to speak with everybody. And that's all I have. Thanks for the opportunity tonight and I wish everybody well. Stay safe.
Thank you.
We're now moving on to uh Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record. Felicia, star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, ten thirty fourth Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Okay, um, my question as one of the people who helped um with the petition and constructing the petition, I am glad to hear the first reading um or the non-needed first reading or introduction to the city as a official document um slated to be um read and considered by the, by the council, but also um maybe even more so slated by the people of the community. Um, I just wanted to give this chance to say that this is initiative that is clearly for the people and by the people. We have concerns as a community. Um, I listened to a fifty some odd year old Caucasian woman who went through COVID, who went at six figures that now makes nothing, that had a four hundred and fifty um dollar rent increase um right here on Seventh Avenue. I listened to my friends who work on cars, who um put themselves together, talk about that they just had their rent increase, but they want to fight it, but they can't because they need a place to live. Right? We are, these are real concerns. On election night, while it was going on, we're getting some of the petitions signed. We listen to people say that they had their rent increased two times since COVID started. Any concerns, this has been fifty years in the making. This isn't a rush job. This is a job that is right on time. And I, I like to say, as a committee, we discussed and we're open for anyone to come and sit down with the committee because we're not individuals. We're a group of white, black,
One minute remaining.
White, black, everything in between, right? That came together to say we need um some help of all different ages and different statuses, that we need some help in this community because we all want to be able to stay here. I believe that it's fair, it is legally sound, and it takes in everybody from the landlords to the tenant. Right? It even has um portions inside there that say if your taxes go up and you need to raise your rent, there's a committee that comes together and say, hey, we'll do it for you. But we have a place, this is for the people and by people, and it's about Asbury Park and a resident in it and a renaissance, the renaissance for everybody to be able to take part in. So thank you, everybody, for reading it and um thank you for just, just being here.
Time's up.
Thank you.
We're, I'm now calling upon Carrie. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Cory Butch, five hundred Deal Lake Drive. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. I don't mean to be screaming. First of all, I have a couple questions and then I want to make a statement in relation to the rent stabilization ordinance. My questions are, my first question is, was that where, was the complex that we saw this morning, this afternoon, this evening, was that Rita's location? Was that where Rita's deli was? Um, that was, that's one of my questions. The other thing is, what are we doing different now that COVID is, COVID is surging? How are we going to get to our most vulnerable and potentially, um, you know, make a difference, you know? Two, I mean, sorry, three. I asked you guys about a shop local campaign. Is anybody having a shop local campaign? If not, can we do a last push to get everybody in Asbury Park to only buy Christmas presents and, and holiday presents on Cookman and um off of Cookman throughout the town on Main? You know, wherever, buy gift certificates, that kind of thing. Last, um, last question is, how can we, the public, be part of the budget discussions? I know there's going to be an official, you know, opportunity for us to comment on the budget, but that's when everything's done. So is there a way for us to get in now? And um is there a contact that we could have on that? Last but not least, I want to talk about supporting the best stabilization ordinance. And as you know, in order, normally I would say, hey, laissez faire, let's let everything happen market driven, but Asbury Park's not doing anything market driven. We are in a public private partnership with any kind of redevelopment. And I want to remind people that during the waterfront redevelopment, and it passed in two thousand
One minute remaining.
We had four hundred and fifty three occupied apartment units located in thirty three structures that were acquired and tenants were relocated. We had twenty two single family homes that were acquired and tenants or owners were relocated. We had a hundred and ninety three rooming house units and they were located in four structures and they were, the tenants were relocated as well as eighteen business operations and two churches. Now I just implore you guys to level the playing field at this point. We gave a lot as a community. We paid with our blood, with our businesses, with our churches. It's time now to let, level the playing field. Do something to assure that people are not driven out. That's my neighbors, your neighbors, your friends, your family. So thank you guys for listening and I'm looking forward to.
Time's up.
Okay, uh, Carrie, I'll try to answer your questions. If I missed one, I apologize. It's John Moore. I apologize. Uh, is this lot that Rita's store used to be on? I, I believe so. I'm ninety nine percent sure. So yes. Uh, I'll skip to three, shop local. We, we all totally agree with it, but can we enforce it and make people shop local? No. So your request to that can't be done. Uh, but do we support it? Absolutely. Always have, always will. Before COVID, I think this has always said that. So uh, budget, I'll let Donna get back to you down the road on that. Uh, and then the one on COVID. I, I know you and I disagree that we're not doing enough. I think we're doing as much as any city in our predicament in New Jersey. We're at the mercy sometimes as far as the federal money, the state money and even the county money. And the county money, which is the federal money, it was right now is paying for the testing. That runs out December thirty first. And I've been reaching out to both the Freehold Director, our Senator Assemblypeople to see what's going on and even our federal senators to see what's going on in Washington. We, Asbury, and we, the country, need another stimulus package, whether another COVID package before the end of the year. If not, everything comes to a standstill and the city of Asbury Park, the city of whatever, New Brunswick, uh, Madelon, Madison, everything does not have the type of money to address COVID uh as some people wish. So if this money runs out, uh, it scares me. Uh, we will not have the money for the testing. And again, I got to give credit to Amy Quinn, who reached out to the county, uh, and talked to the lead attorney for the county, I believe, Mr. Fitzgerald. When we first started this and halfway through and still to this day, as far as why can't we get better information as far as hotspots, everything the county says? And they're the ones running it because it's county out the bar. They won't give it to us. Uh, Eileen and Yvonne reached out to the county freeholders and everything, said we needed testing. And because of that outreach, we got the testing and then it went to other towns also. So I think we've been up and above as far as maybe other towns and everything. I think we're doing a good job. I know that we can always do better and we'll, we'll try, but sometimes our hands are tied by what's going on at levels much above us. But yes, we're in touch with people above us to see what's going to happen. Uh, I appreciate your comments and I thank you.
Hey, I'm calling upon three five zero nine. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello, council, mayor and uh city manager, assistant city manager. This is Michael Kushner, eleven hundred Fifth Avenue. Um, my question is two part and this is to uh Mike Manzella, and this is regarding the uh the wayfinding and branding initiatives. And um I support this. I think the signs look great, Mike, and those people that presented, but I think it calls into question our, the city's priorities. If we are to put signage up that is designed to uh to provide guidance and help not just visitors to the city, but residents navigate the city, I think it's incumbent upon the city to ensure that these routes that we, that we direct these people to are safe, especially since they're going to be on foot or biking when they see these signs. And uh they clearly are not. I think that on paper, Asbury Park is a walkable, bikeable city, but for those of us who live here, we clearly know it's not. It's, it's not a safe city. Um, so my, first part of my question is, this grant where we require to spend this money on this initiative? And if not, could we have used this money to, to uh implement the city's plan for biking and walking? And since we are moving forward with this, do you also plan on fast tracking the implementation of the bike walk plan to ensure that these routes are safe, such as interconnected bike lanes, bike paths protected and buffeted bike lanes where possible, uh back end parking, replacing replacing the, uh, front-end parking and so forth? So, those are my two questions to Mr. Manzella. I thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Uh, th- thank you, thank you, uh, Michael. And, uh, Michael Manzella, if you please, uh, reply, and then before you do, I'm going to say, and I could be long on that, Michael Manzella, correct me, Mike. Um, some, some of this money is just totally earmarked for, I think, wayfinding, and if it's not used, we lose it, so I don't know if that would be a good solution. And then, some of the, your requests were number two, maybe money that we, like, don't have at this point in time for everything, but maybe we can do some just because of, you know, as much as businesses are taking a hit, the city took, like, at least a 25% hit as far as money paid to the city. So, we're not flush with cash, but again, I'll let Manzella specially correct me and then answer your questions. Again, Michael, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Michael, for your feedback. Um, with the support of this council and with the help of the advocacy of groups like the Complete Streets Coalition in town, since we've adopted the master plan for biking and walking over the past two years, we've striped over five miles of bike infrastructure. We've made tremendous strides in pedestrian and bicycling improvements in this city, and we look forward to doing more. Um, I don't think it's a chicken or the egg thing, I think it's the chicken and the egg in this case. The more we can do to promote walkability and bikability, whether that's through signage, bike infrastructure, improved sidewalks, um, tra- com- traffic calming, like on Main Street with the road diet, I think it's all, uh, positive in, in getting us towards that end goal. As far as this grant is concerned, yes, this $325,000 was awarded specifically to do wayfinding, um, to, you know, uh, as part of the Transit Village program, um, which the city applied for, and we were awarded. So, um, it has to be used on that funding. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Now calling upon Pam Lamberton. Please state your name and address for the record, star six to unmute yourself, Pam.
Good evening. Um, I strongly support the rent stabilization ordinance that was presented with the initiative petition. Uh, I think it's important to note that it does include reasonable safeguards for landlords, but it mostly protects our vulnerable city renters. I think it's important that we met, remember that this population enclo- includes new teachers, new firefighters, and new police officers who make very little in starting salaries. It, it includes our lower wage earners, many are young people who support our tourist industry, and it also includes our elderly, longtime residents. Um, Melody, if the ordinance is available on the city website, could you explain how to find it? Thank you.
Does that complete your comments?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Pam. And, uh, Melody, if we please, yeah, can you answer that?
Sure, sure. Um, the ordinance is not yet up on the website, but tomorrow, when I get into the office, I will definitely scan it, and it will be on the city clerk's page.
Thank you.
Hey, I am calling upon 3444. Please state your name and address for the record. And star six to unmute yourself.
Greetings. My name is Derek Minno Bloom. I live at 1108 First Avenue. Um, and I am just calling in favor of the rent stabilization, and for all those, um, rent stabilization is different than rent control. Rent control is a permanent freeze on rent, and rent stabilization moves with the market per year, um, so just to make that, uh, clear. But yeah, part of the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition, I wanted to thank the city, um, and thank them for all the work we've done in the future with the last eight inclusionary zoning ordinances for affordable housing, and I hope that we can really work together this time. And I'm advocating that we pass this as soon as possible. Um, during the pandemic, housing is going to be pretty wild. I imagine by February, March, we might see the worst housing crisis in U.S. history. Um, but I also support this plan, because I think it's really fair. Um, I think it's fair to the community and also to developers and landlords, and as a member of the left, I almost think it's too fair to landlords and developers, but we wanted to write an ordinance that the whole city could stand behind, and that we could move forward together. Um, and I think, you know, most landlords and developers in Asbury currently, um, don't raise their rents more than two or, two, two to 4%, those are their, care about our community and our kind. But I think this ordinance is for those landlords and those landlords that care about profit more than community diversity, and when I say diversity, I mean, um, both economic and ethnic, um, diversity. And I think this rent stabilization ordinance really gets, catches the spirit of Asbury, which I think people actually really love it, because of its working-class spirit, and more and more, Asbury is not becoming working-class, and it's becoming an upper-class-
One minute remaining.
So, I think this ordinance would really kind of help keep the spirit of Asbury that folks love so much, it'll help keep it diverse. And, um, I just, uh, hope that, uh, I heard some other comments today, and I think the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition is certainly, um, willing to meet with different groups to talk about this, um, and your concern. You could, um, email me at derek, D-E-R-E-K dot minno, M-I-N-N-O dot bloom, B-L-O-O-M at gmail dot com, if you want to have a meeting with us. We would love to meet, um, because ultimately, we believe in justice and democracy, um, for all. Um, thank you for your time, and, uh, thank the Affordable Housing Coalition for all your work to get this petition done. You're amazing and inspiring, and everyone, have a good night. That's it.
Hey, uh, Derek, it's John Moore. Thank you for, uh, your comments, and I thank you for giving out your email address and telling people if they want to talk, you're, you're open to talk, so thank you, next.
I'm calling upon 2763. Please state your name and address for the record, star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, this is Linda Phillips, 400 Deal Lake Drive. Um, I'm just speaking also in support of the rent stabilization ordinance, um, for many of the reasons that people have already said, but one thing that I found interesting was when I was listening to the discussion over these new signage, um, things that are going to go up around town, the people who did the surveys many times said that diversity was an important factor in their thinking of how to design around the city, and without a rent stabilization ordinance, the diversity of the city is going to, like, disappear, and it only will be, um, an upper-income, uh, level of people who can continue to live here. And I know I worry about continuing to live here in my, in a few years, when I retire, and my income won't be as, um, good as it is right now. I don't know if I'll be able to still be able to live in Asbury Park, and that really upsets me, because I love the people here, and, um, I love the diversity and want to keep, see it stay. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm now calling upon Sylvia Sylvia. Please state your name and address for the record and star six to unmute yourself.
Everybody, um, can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sylvia Sylvia, um, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce, uh, 200 Lincoln Drive, Ocean Township. Um, I just had a couple of things. First of all, I, I hope this finds everybody well and hello. Um, uh, you know that our experience with all the departments of the city have been just magnificent, but I really had to give a little extra acknowledgement, uh, today to DPW. I know that they are stretched extremely thin right now, and, um, they really, it just in the last two days, have done so much to help us, um, uh, brighten the spirit, um, and bring the holiday cheer to town, um, helping me with the hu- with the, uh, menorah. Um, Hanukkah starts on Thursday, and, and helping hoist up the Christmas tree in Press Plaza, which I was unable to do this year. Um, we could bring it there, but we could not get it up there, um, because of this few closures, um, and street work, our equipment would definitely not have gone down those roads. I really want to thank them, they really did so much, as always. Um, next thing is, if I have not said this sooner, um, then I was remiss, but, um, Ms. Viera, I know that you took your position probably in February of this year, um, about, you know, a minute before the pandemic hit, and if I haven't said what a magnificent job I think that you're doing, um, then I'm sorry for not saying it sooner, but you've been responsive, collaborative, um, and so helpful with everything that the chamber tries to do to support the businesses in town, particularly right now, and we need it more than ever, so thank you for that. Um, uh, lastly, uh, one of the previous callers had mentioned about, um, the shop local, um, campaigns and, and, uh, I can, and, and we have been trying to, to do as much as we can with that. I launched a Be Vocal Shop Local campaign. Um, I will redouble our efforts on that, our social media and our, um, website and, um, all of our platforms have a very large reach, and I've been trying to hit it as much as a, an essentially closed chamber can, um, but I will redouble that and try to do everything I can to get, um, the, uh, the businesses as much attention during this very crucial time as we can. Thank you all so much for everything, and I hope to talk to you again before Christmas, but happy Hanukkah Thursday and Merry Christmas in a couple of weeks. Take care and safely.
Thank you.
Not seeing any more hands raised, do I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now closed to the public.
Okay, uh, Melody, before you go on, can I just, uh, make a brief comment? If, if anybody, oop, whatever that is. If, if anybody wishes to send me comments, be they pro for about the rent stabilization, about any issue, you all have my email, just john dot moore at cityofasburypark dot com, and I will share that with the entire council. So, please, uh, do not text me. People keep on texting me, I say, do not text me, I do, I'm slow at texting. So, shoot me an email on any subject, anytime, and I'll make sure the rest of the council gets it. Thank you, Melody, next.
Thank you. We're now on to the minutes. We have the municipal council executive meeting of November 24th, the 4:00 p.m. meeting. We have the minutes of the municipal, municipal council regular meeting minutes of November 24th, the 6:00 p.m. meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on two individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2020-346, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
On to Resolution 2020-347, a resolution entering into an agreement with Monmouth County to administer the city's community block grant program. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on two, Resolution 2020-348, and a resolution awarding a bid for supplying liquid sodium hypochlorate to the wastewater treatment plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Moore.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to Resolution 2020-349, a resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment needed for the AP-TV station. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-350, a resolution for an emergency contract for the disinfecting of the mun- municipal building following CDC guidelines. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-351, a resolution approving an inter-local service agreement between the Borough of Rumsen and the City of Asbury Park Fire Department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Second, Moore. Okay.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-352, a resolution to cancel portion of pilot billing for Block 103, Lot 2, 100 Drury Lane. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-353, a resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances, ordinances for introduction. We have Ordinance 2020-28, an ordinance of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, and the State of New Jersey, amending Ordinance Number 2018-21 relating to the implementation and the collection of development fees as codified in Chapter 2, Section 88 of the Asbury Park City Code, with a public hearing date of December 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-29, an ordinance establishing sal- I'm sorry, ordinance 2020-29, an ordinance establishing salary ranges for employees of the City of Asbury Park with a public hearing for December 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Are there any additional comments before we move on for adjournment?
Move to adjourn, Quinn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned.